Everybody has the minutes from the December first and fourth. If you have any questions or concerns, hear them out. Not a majority in motion. Yep.
Make a motion before we go to reading of the minutes. And question or answers for.
Motion by pillar.
Second.
And second by hack discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any additions, corrections to the agenda?
There's one change. Mr. Hopper called and said he wouldn't be able to make it.
Alright, thank you. Any else? Okay.
Motion approval of the change.
Alright, motion by hack.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passed. For a 2018 street project, more engineering plans and specs. Mark? Come on up. If you want to have a seat, you can pull his chair over here. Have a seat.
Well, we have a little delay on the schedule. I was hoping to bring 90% plans to you tonight, but with the addition of elbow woods and the additional geotech and whatnot.
More just wants additional discovery, not, it's not done. It's got to be.
Okay. Anyway, what we're wanting to do is just have a chance to go through it ourselves and check everything instead of rushing it and get it here and whatnot. So what, what I'm proposing then is that we would have those 90% on the next meeting, I guess January 2nd or whenever that meeting is. We would then, and when I say 90%, what that means for us is that all the work plan is done. Everything's in there, but we just have that last 10% as us checking it. So we would have that checked on the following week. We could get the first ad in the paper by January 18th and we could open early February. So.
Still a good timeline, still good.
Yeah, yeah. And that's kind of the advantage to this whole thing is that we, there's a lot of.
We're gonna do.
We're still in good shape, but we just didn't want to rush it. I was just saying that we were here. So. So that's where we are in the schedule. And then I guess just a couple of things. One thing that we noticed and just wanted to bring to your attention, just, you know, whether you like it or you don't, but over by the school there, it looks like would be a good place for a speed table. And that would basically.
Oh, what?
A speed cable, which is, you know, just kind of a concrete pad. It slows a little bit. Yeah, it's just to, it's a traffic control device and it ensures that, you know, cars slow down and they can't go speeding through there, so.
Like the elementary, that must be an inverted speed table.
So it's just something that, you know, we noticed and thought would be a good idea. If you want to include it, we certainly can. If you don't like the idea, then.
So you're talking this and this one?
Mainly this one here. We could also do the second one there if, if there was, you know, an appetite for that. So we could do either both or none. But like I said, this is a means to.
I don't think there isn't a problem with speeding in there.
Currently the school puts pedestal signs over the street that say it's during, when school isn't present.
Okay.
So you kind of have to maneuver around those a little bit anyway, so.
I don't, I personally don't.
I don't think this is ever an issue either.
I don't, I don't think either of them. I don't know.
Yeah.
Master, is there a flashing light there?
No.
Between those two schools.
No.
Like I said, like.
And that's actually probably a pretty good idea.
What's that?
A flashing, a flashing light, maybe up on the end here.
Up here?
Yeah, or a break there, you know, on that might be, you know, like the one who put between the middle school and the high school, that flash and stop sign draws a lot of attention.
Or, you know, if it's flashing 15 mile an hour speed line while it's flashing.
I don't see near as much issue there because you've got the stop sign on the one end there and then you've got that dip that will take the whole bottom of your car out if you, if you're doing anything excessive there. So it's just such a short stretch there. And then when the school has those signs there in the crosswalk.
You did a pretty decent job. You can never have enough safety precaution, but I don't think this is, you're right, this is a pretty short stretch to the stops.
Great idea, I just, I don't.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't feel.
Okay.
So Mark, I guess like what, what they're like with the, the elevation be the.
The speed table?
Yeah.
They're out there like six inches or something, just something that, I mean, if you hit it going full speed, you're gonna know it. So it forces you to slow down.
And low enough for it's maintainable for payloaders and all that stuff.
So then it would be at the same like height that like at the curb, you know what you're saying?
Roughly.
So then if we did that, would we have to do any kind of additional work for the, for the ADA with lamps or?
Additional.
We're supposed, you guys want us to put ADA accessibility right here and here?
Well, if we had the speed table there, we would, we would level it off so that we could use that for the ADA.
How does water run down the gutter here when it hits that speed table?
Well, if you notice.
Yes, oh, storm sewer, that's right.
Yeah. There's an existing one here.
Yep.
So we would just connect that.
Okay. So you can run storm sewer from here to there?
Yep.
And there to here?
Well, just across.
Correct.
So like I say, it was just a thought.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so then I guess the other thing, we talked last time about the shared use paths.
Yes.
So wanted to see what your thoughts were on that moving forward. Did you all get a chance to look at the estimates, the numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess my thought is not only for concrete.
No question.
What I'd like to try and do down on the south side is repair what's bad. And repair what we talked about that, that approaches and then that sidewalk that runs, that connects to the arc and onto the city shop. And not do the whole.
Isn't that what you did here though, for concrete is?
Only been the whole works. The whole area.
What, okay.
Well, actually on the concrete, this would be for all of the, the bad panels.
Right, so you weren't going to touch the good ones?
Correct.
That's just replacing the bad ones and putting concrete in front of the building.
Right.
This is the shop.
121?
Yes.
So the 121 is what we actually wanted. That was the approaches to each of those businesses and then in front of the, the city shop. So then the only other one that for comparison purposes would be the asphalt to concrete, the 49,052 versus, no, that's highway 200.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, 5A and 5B are kind of companions. This one here, number four.
Number four.
Yeah, that's to, that's to do the aprons like we discussed in front of the city shop and then any bad panels.
So not the whole length.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I misunderstood that in the meeting.
It just seems like that highway 200 piece would be, for 133, I thought that there'd be a bigger difference between that and.
Yeah.
The stuff on the south side.
Cause here you're for, so what is the difference here on the, on highway 200? You've got 2105 feet of that, right? At five inch concrete.
Square yards, yeah.
Oh, okay. And then up there, not a whole lot less. 1307, okay.
Well, we've got, we've got the multi-use path on alternate, up by highway 200 at five inches and we've got it at eight inches down here. Well, we got it at five and eight.
Yeah, now the eight would be for the. So I see there are 30, 40 of that, five.
Gives the rest, okay.
Yes.
Okay, well, I misunderstood that.
Please, go ahead.
Why are you using five inch concrete on that pathway?
Well, as we understood it, the, especially up front of the city shop, there is a lot of vehicular looping over that.
So you're gonna use it for 2105?
210.
Square yards.
Square yards.
2100.
Twenty.
That's.
What is that?
The one along Main Street, we've got a thousand square yards, a thousand.
That's.
We're looking at highway 200.
Highway 200.
The highway 200 section where we have asphalt currently, right?
Right.
And there you were talking about from Senex back to the tunnel, basically. That's asphalt right now and you would be tearing out that asphalt and replacing that with concrete.
Five inch?
That's what it's called.
Yeah. I mean, we could, we could go four inch on that because the only traffic on that should technically be a sweeper or a skid steer type thing for clearing it in the winter time, I would think.
Yeah, I can see it being five inch from the city shop and all those approaches, but not on that.
That's eight inch.
That's eight.
That's eight inch during the.
That, that's fine, but I, I just think five inches is way thick for the highway.
Or what that currently is right now. It's definitely not five inches.
It's four at the most for asphalt.
No wall of, wall of concrete.
He's talking about.
Yeah. Dave, what do you think their concrete thicknesses?
I have no idea. Went up towards it, of course, when they put it in, I don't know what they, what that thickness was.
Pretty, pretty light because there was.
Really?
There was worry about vehicles riding on even though in the fourth spot.
How much would that change if it went to four inches?
Well, you could.
Get figured out real quick.
I know it's only a thousand bucks, but the crushed, well, crushed concrete or aggregate base. We have that on hand.
Yeah, we can take that off there a couple of weeks.
Um, yeah.
Eight cubic yards.
Yeah, I, I mean.
It's only a thousand dollars.
We'd still have to mobilize, you know, move it, but.
But you have to move it and you have to get it there, right? Or you think of just recycling what you have there now?
You have to crush it.
Yeah.
You have to bring it to do that.
Yeah.
And maybe that's already taken into account and that's just the cost to move it around. It's 12 bucks. Seems. Pretty cheap.
Light.
That's cubic yards too. It's five yards. Close to tons.
So it might be. Just guessing, 17 hundred yards times, we're saying 60. Well, it would make a, it would make a difference, probably 50,000 or better.
Okay. I think that's something we want to consider.
You're always looking for it.
Yeah.
Four inch, that's the common driveway that's built, put in front of your homes now, I believe.
Well, it's common sidewalk, driveways should be less than six.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to see it, it'll be more. If you look at our current concrete. It's a walking path, I mean, a lot of it's like broke up, you know?
Are you thinking mainly in front of the, the shop casey where people walk in, where you drive on it and it's crushed up there?
The example is like from the, from I guess the baseball diamond, let's say to the park area, you know, I mean. You know, the area, the area like never does get, and it does get, I guess, like go on and all, you know, it's all like broke up.
Yeah, you're right. So you'd rather have it left at five?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, eight in front of the shop?
I'd definitely leave it eight in front of the shop. That's, that gets heavy, it's garbage trucks, you know, that's a lot of, lot of traffic on that thing.
I mean, we can get to those numbers easy enough and get it over to Molly.
Wait, I should shuffle it, I guess. But I definitely would like to see. The problem areas fixed. I see both points, four inch and the five inch. So how long is the four inch gonna last again and then you do what it is currently doing? On highway 200? Well, I don't know.
So are you maybe suggesting then, when I look at this with the alternate, that three inches of asphalt gives you the same integrity as five inches of concrete?
No. No.
It's just a section that we're using, like I said, the five inch. There would have to be more of a, a base for the asphalt. I mean, we're not saying that right there.
Yeah, that's, that's what caught my attention, so.
But no, we're not saying that right there. The four inch concrete would be more long. Because concrete just by its nature, you wouldn't want to go less than four. So that's going to be kind of the minimum that you would put, put down.
I wonder, I wonder if part of our issue over by the ballpark in the, in the park area, maybe we didn't get a substantial base put down when that concrete was poured in. And maybe that's why we see some of the breaking up that, that we do like that. But that's almost, it almost looks like there's been some heaving and, and stuff like that in those areas. If you had a good firm base down there, you might see the heaving effect as much. It would be noticeable.
Yeah, and I think, you know, part of the issue down there is probably because it was so wet.
Yeah, that could very well be too. There's some water up.
I'm wondering that, I have never walked the Gulf Wars path. And I'm not, what is it, five years old? How was that?
Quite, yeah.
How was that all, yeah?
Very good.
Very nice.
Hardly cracking.
One thing I know, I walk that west path all the time. On those approaches, you definitely want to put eight, eight inches of concrete on both sides of the city shop, the approaches. And there are some of those slabs that are broke off, that are dipping in the ditch, you know, and I don't know. I'm not sure what that was because I never stopped to measure up the thickness up there, what those were. I was surprised when he said two weeks ago that they were eight by eight slabs. I thought they were, I didn't think they were that wide. But I did count the ones that I thought should have been replaced and I counted 150 of them. But now there are some out there that, they're fine. There's others that, of course, that are really bad and then there are some that you could probably get by with.
You know that section by the baseball diamond? The water from all the way in North End, North Star Two runs down that road into the Bald Island parking lot and right towards Arrow Creek through that grass area. It's, it's a real wet. I wonder if it's not a base issue too because of the moisture that you get down.
So this eight inches just in front of the city shop, not including the approaches?
No, that would be the approaches as well.
All the approaches?
Yes. Yeah, let's go ahead, let's go with the four inch and just see what that does to the numbers and then we'll have to make a decision based on that.
Alright. And how about highway 200? We have a large discrepancy between asphalt and concrete.
Well, it's gonna tweak that if we move out the four inches, that's gonna tweak that quite a bit.
Yeah. Make it more aligned.
Do you want that tweaked too, right, Dan?
Yep. I think so.
Okay.
Three inches of, so alternate 5A is asphalt milling full depth. So that means you're taking it down to the base, correct?
Correct.
And you're, you don't reuse the millings on that?
No, we would be.
You would be reusing them. Okay. As base?
Uh, yeah, I mean, when a, when a mill machine's going through there, it would mix everything, you know, the millings with the existing base. Then we'd come through and compact that.
Okay.
And then put the asphalt in.
Okay. Which is what I'm thinking when we mill, mill the overlay in Main Street, we don't do it that way. We take the millings off, we pile them up and then they put it for, there's no, that's not full depth.
I mean, that, it's an alter, an alternative way of doing it. You know, we're just making use of materials there, right there. Now, your main street, you probably do want to do it a little bit more conventional, bring the gravel in and everything that, just for a shared use path. It's a perfectly good way of doing it.
So maybe this sounds dumb, but three inches of asphalt, to me, seems like it's set up for failure again.
Scanning.
At $49,000 for that entire section from Senex to the hub. In, instead of going concrete for $133,000, wouldn't it be more, make more sense to go four inches of asphalt and, and add maybe another?
Well, we.
15,000, 20,000 to it?
And, and what we're using for the city streets is a four inch minimum of the asphalt. So we're looking at it as, you know, here's a city street with four inches, here's a walking path, so we can reduce that a little bit. So I mean, yeah, we can certainly, you know, put four inches down there, but that's kind of the thinking we were going through is that.
It's overkill maybe? But it might.
But, but it might.
Extend the life.
Yeah.
Instead of every, in eight years that falling apart at three inches, maybe we get 10 years out of four inches. And still keep it under $70,000 versus concrete for 133,000.
Well, this 133 will be down by virtue of factor, we're gonna look at four inches there.
That one and this one.
You know, so we're, we're just start bringing those numbers a little closer together.
Cause just roughing it, what do you figure here, Dan? Fifty, I just took 50,000.
Highway 200.
Yeah, I, I think I was high on that number.
Highway 200.
But yeah, it's gonna be different.
Yeah, if you're gonna go asphalt on that, I would go four inches because we do run the Bobcat down that for skull removal and if it gets really dirty, we'd run the broom on the Bobcat down there. And I think three inches on a warm summer day, that Bobcat would break.
Okay.
Should we just leave those three options?
I, I would, I think, I think.
You guys sweep it in sometimes?
As you say.
We have, yeah. And it's not a real common practice, but I mean, we've had, had stuff on it where we've had drunk on the sleeve in the past.
Okay.
Well, we'll switch everything at four and see what it does.
Pump that to four and bring the concrete to four?
Yep.
And then we'll see, see how it plays out.
And leave it in front of the shop at eight.
And the approach.
Approaching, okay. Right. So now we look at alternate one?
We've looked at those before, but. Yeah, where that one is paving 10th Street.
That's four inch.
We've got the, I think that's the Old Seasons parking lot. And the football field parking lot. And the shared use paths.
Last, last week I went to the school board meeting and visited with them about that project and they were in favor of sharing that expense. They, they did not say if there is an equal share or who's gonna pay what. Have you heard from a hazenware sports, Monty, and all of what, what they're.
Okay.
So when do we have to make the final determination on these pieces if we want them in the?
It'll be in the plans, basically, just as an alternative. Once you get the prices, then you decide if you're doing it.
Right. Now, Mark and I visited last week, more alternates we have, the messier gets, right? Are contractors gonna shy away from a project that has these alternates and possibly elbow woods and park place on it?
No, I don't think they're gonna shy away. That's not really the issue. The issue that we have to determine is how the bid would be awarded. So, you know, we can say it's gonna be awarded on base bid alone, or it's gonna be awarded on base plus all of the alternates or some order or whatever the alternate. So I mean, we have to work that through to see how we want, how we want to award it then.
Okay.
So that's what makes it messy is that, you know, you're introducing a lot of variables in there.
Mark, have you had any bid openings recently? I mean, three projects?
Well, not recent.
Okay, I didn't know if anybody's.
We had some in the summer.
I didn't know if anybody's kind of ahead of the curve and do it now and considering how close we're getting with your estimates versus our contractor. Alright.
And one thing I want to mention too, when we do go through the plans, the next meeting. And one thing I wanna mention too, when we do go through the plans, uh, the next meeting, um, just so you're aware. You know, when it comes to the ADA ramps and the sidewalks, of course, that's all a condition of, you know, back in North Dakota, that be addressed. And that's, you know, exactly what we're doing. There is a difference between, between complying with the rule itself and complying with the spirit of the rule. And we're trying to, and what we're doing right now is to comply with the spirit of the rule. So, you know, like when I talk with DOT, they said, okay, if you've got a, a block that doesn't have any sidewalk on it, well then you don't need an ADA ramp, obviously, cause it goes to nowhere. If you've got, you know, a sidewalk that's missing a short piece, we're, you know, then yeah, go ahead, put that piece in, we need a ramp. So, without having any real direction from them as to what that breakpoint is or whatnot. We're putting in, um, you know, as far as the ramp sidewalk, what we think would be the best way of doing it. Now, it might be a little bit beyond the rule as far as just strictly complying with, with their, um, criteria, but it, we think it's gonna be better for the city. So then at the next meeting, if you think it's too much or whatever, I mean, we can just cut it out and, and comply strictly with the letter of the law.
And not, and not put our, the, the money or, or anything at consequence of losing anything or
Right, right. So I mean, there's just areas, you know, like, um, I think on fifth street by the school, you know, where we were talking about those bushes and hedges and everything. I mean, there, there's a crosswalk, how's it going from south to north, and it doesn't even get to the corner before it like crosses over, and it's it's like, what is that, you know? I mean, you don't even provide a landing space for anybody. So, you know, we're going through and saying, okay, we think you should have sidewalk from here to here, put a ramp in. Again, you know, it might be a little bit above and beyond, not necessarily required by DOT, you, whatever, we can cut it out if you like, but
But we, we talked about that last meeting and clarified, if we put that crosswalk in a different area, we wouldn't have to add the concrete, correct?
Are you talking about about the little black swabs?
Yes. Yeah, we didn't talk about it, cause
No, well, we were talking about the, the bushes being hindrance to
Yeah, but Josh?
Yeah.
Remember he had his, he had to go his floor?
We talked about the south side of that intersection.
Putting the crosswalk on the south side.
Putting it on the south side and that's
Then that would clarify that problem or rectify that problem.
Well, yeah, and that's certainly an option, when you go the south side of the intersection, but you have to clarify the crosswalk issue, but it doesn't clarify the site issue for people driving up to that intersection.
Great.
Great.
Well, I don't know if anybody you've driven either or looked at that, but when you're, when you're, when you're driving and you're heading south, and you're right beside the double doors of the elementary school. You can see all the way across the other intersection now that Al removed those shrubs. So it's, it's at least fifty feet before you get to the stop sign.
The issue is coming this way, cause that stop sign?
Well, when you stop on there, and you're, when you're traveling to the west of that street, you're right in front of Al's. When you're at, when you're at the crosswalk, you can see almost all the double doors now.
But where the crosswalk is versus the stop sign? The stop sign sits back from there if I remember right. Because it, it
Of course, not, there's no leaves or anything.
Right.
Yeah, not looking through the bushes, yeah.
Alright, so we don't have to act anything, this is just informational on, uh, on these alternatives. Perfect.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we go ahead and we get those numbers modified and then look up us moving forward.
Yeah. And then, the numbers don't really matter. All you have to worry about is a one call.
Yeah.
The numbers have changed, so It doesn't matter.
Yep, okay. Um, as far as the geotech, um, I think last I heard, they're scheduled to be out on Thursday. Oh, I'm sorry, we needed to get that, a motion for that.
For the geotech work?
On Elbow Woods.
Are they, we, cause they do have, they're in a hoarse, a bit boring.
Yeah, what we, what we're requesting are two bores on Elbow Woods, um, because we have no idea how thick the gravel is there or what's going on. The estimate that NTI gave me for that was two thousand dollars to do that. And they could be out on Thursday, and I wanna double check with them to make sure that's, that is the case.
But we wouldn't need a motion. So let me, let me just, now since you brought up Elbow Woods, let me just bring everybody up to speed on the conversation we had. So last week, um, we had all the citizens that live on Elbow Woods and Park Place, except for the house just south of James Sailors, Lovelies. They don't live there anymore. Ideally voicemails on cell phone numbers and the house voicemail that we had, and I had no return calls from them. Mr. Edwards wasn't able, Patty were not able to attend that meeting, I was visiting their home about that. But everybody else was able to come and we had a meeting at the city hall. There was a lot of mixed emotions, and a, a lot of emotion actually, um, as you can understand, from people that own multiple properties on that, on that road. So, at the end, we met for an hour, we had about an hour long discussion. But at the end of it, even people that were not in favor of the project did say that they wanted to see what it would cost to do it, to do that road. At that point, we were giving options of just asphalt or asphalt and curb and gutter. Well, talking with Mark and Josh, and it looks like curb and gutter are probably gonna be out of the, kind of out of the ballpark, probably price people out of it for sure. Cause we might, wouldn't, possibly need to look at storm sewer, and once we start digging the ground that far and doing that
It's gonna get pricey.
It's gonna get very pricey, so, um, based on what I heard from those people on that, on that street. I think we need to have a board, so we know what the ground looks like underneath there. And I also told, uh, Mark and Josh that we need to look at, also adding on the price for, um, water taps and sewer, yeah, exactly.
And that was, at some point, I mean, um, this kind of gives you an idea of how many lots you're looking at there. And without knowing who owns what and what's doubles and whatever, we would just need someone to mark on here where those, the services would be. You know, if this is a double lot, you only need one service coming in, so be it.
Sure.
Sure. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's, exactly, I know like for sailors have houses on this one, or they own the two beside us. Would you just put it on, right at the, you know, when they sell, those other two lots, they're selling as a pair. People don't buy single lots anymore, so would you put one sewer and water tap right in the middle of those two, Mark? Is that kind of what you
If you're looking
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put one on each lot.
On, in this case you
Right.
No, yes, you're right. Um, if that is a pair, we could just bring, you know, stuff things out to the property line.
Right.
Um, I mean, it's
Then the city owns the two just north of those two.
These ones?
And I would say we'd wanna sell those as a pair, and we do one water and sewer tap there. But, I mean, you do, I don't think we'd wanna do it every
That's kind of against our plan, you know?
What is?
Selling multiple lots. You're trying to get more density, not less density.
Well, I'm being realistic, people aren't buying, no one on that street is bought one lot.
I realize that.
From a real, from a, a real estate lawyer's perspective. Just because there are two lots now, doesn't mean there are gonna be two lots tomorrow, unless you replat them. If you replat them into one lot, fine, but if you're gonna sell them as two lots, you're gonna have two services, because
Somebody may
That's somebody else.
Okay.
Ten years.
Yeah.
You sell them two and somebody can
Just slip them, so, sure. So the thing I wanna stay away from is, why put down new asphalt? And then after the fact, you're digging and tearing it up then to put water and sewer taps in. So I, I'm just coming at it most basic and economical way. Or really, that's the, go ahead, please, sorry. Honestly, we, I guess I started this project, but I think one of the ideas was, you know, to wait until that full block was, was almost all full, you know? And then that, you know, save the deal. I, I agree, and, and what I, what I told, the story I told to Mr. Edwards and everybody else is fuck, if, if they decide that they all wanna do it five years down the road, great, but I think it's our responsibility to let them know that there will be no cheaper time than today with the two point five percent interest, the thirty years, the large project overall, and getting a better value on it than if it's just that street, so. And I, and it's, it's gonna be up to them. It's gonna be up to the people that own each individual lot, if they want this to happen or not.
And that's not to mention the price of oil being down and
Ten years, yep, I did mention that too, the cost of asphalt, not just cheaper today than yesterday, it's cheaper than it has been the last eight to ten years. So, and that's
So the lots that are empty then? We supply a quote for water and sewer service too, and then the existing ones, they already have their service. They don't really have to do that, just the empty lots, correct, voting? In each lot?
Yeah, obviously those with service, you're not gonna worry about.
Yeah.
Great.
And then the city lots, I guess we need to determine what we wanna do on those lots. So how do we tell Mark to proceed up, put the numbers together for, for this?
I agree with that, I think you have to set it up with service to each of the individual lots that, for purposes of putting together the pricing and everything like that.
So for lots that we own and lots that other people own, cause I think we kind of talked about it at that meeting and determined that they were gonna be allowed to decide how many water and sewer they were gonna have on their lots.
How many, how many lots are there?
Or can you just say, put it all in every lot and then just not put them in?
City has four, they have two and two side by side, two, one off of Park Place, or two off of Park Place and two in Elbow Woods. Mr. Edwards, what would you, if you were to keep, if this were to proceed, would you wanna water tap in every one of your properties?
Definitely. Definitely, that, that whole area is set up for two lot minimum. Lots are too small to supply. So just have a decent sized house, decent sized place, two lots. And to have, have a water and sewer in each lot is a waste of all of that money. Great.
I think so too, but I understand what Pat's saying.
Well, yeah, I think if, then if that's what Mr. Edwards wants, then you should replat this lot.
His stuff.
And turn them into one or lots, not two.
Same with
Would be a better way of doing it.
And cheap, cheaper.
You don't, well, yeah, you don't, uh,
Yeah.
If you're gonna have separate lots, you put services in each lot. If you're gonna combine lots, replat them, and then fine, then you got one big lot. If they were, if they were replating, would that kind of change your mind?
That's a paper thing, right?
Oh, I know, I'm, I'm just asking.
But I mean, right, replating, replating, that's a paper thing.
It's not a real thing that costs a great deal on board.
Right.
And I, yeah, I could do that, replat them, I guess.
And I will let you all know that Nancy and I were there together, that pretty much everybody on the east side of Elbow Woods was not in favor of the project happening. I think Molesville, I was kind of iffy on that, but I think, I think they're more towards not doing than doing. But, and I got the opposite feeling from everybody, I didn't ask everybody individually, are you in favor or not, but that's kind of a feeling that
And they wanted hard numbers, which even if you did a bid, it's not gonna be exactly what they bid, it's gonna be higher or lower cause things change, but, and they wanted an exact number, and you can't do that.
So I think to help with that number, the boardings need to happen.
Yeah, it'll get you closer.
Did I clear it up for you, that'd be easy?
That does, if we can, uh,
I don't know if that does not.
If, uh, we can get approval to do those two additional boardings, um, like I said, I talked to NTI, they could, they told me they could be out on Thursday, this week. I told them I would have them out tomorrow with the air con is here.
I think if anywhere, there might be thin on gravel at the very north end where, by Jettins and Novax. So in the forward last three, four years, we've had very little issue with that road bed and, uh, soft spots, you know? Last year, you know, with all the snow removal you guys did, I thought it held up really well.
It helped here at one time, it helped by Jettins, it's probably had it on that end.
Yeah. So are you looking at the north end and the south end doing boring, you said, or, or would you?
Um, maybe like quarter of the way in from both sides, you know, just something representative. But if you're, are you thinking that it's a little bit healthier through here versus up this way? Cause if so, we'll, we'll keep them a little bit closer to the north, the
Dave, what are your, what do you, what do you
Well, when they put that road in, didn't they blue top that the whole thing, they had it all set to grade, but I don't remember the thickness of it, that would have been when the road was here, but I know they had it all to grade.
Yeah.
Kind of a base
Probably on that hill there, there is a lot of gravel in there, the fact that we didn't have to, you know, level that out.
And build it up too.
Yeah, build it up.
But as far as
Yeah, yeah. The whole thing. I think the private thing necessarily would be up here.
Well, I think Park Place is thing too.
You thought Park Place is built up too. Well, but that had to be, that had to be built up though too. It was built up properly, yeah. Yeah, probably, it's probably, man, pretty good there. And that's, cause that road it used to be, you know, kind of flat, but it went up pretty steep, you know? And then they, they then kind of like blended everything in, you know, pressed on some steel, but
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna need a motion to proceed to have Mark do the boardings, give permission to get the boardings done on that road. So we can get better numbers to those people.
So
Motion by both. Second, second by skirt, discussion. Roll call.
Whoa.
I.
Sturrock.
Hi.
Keller.
I.
Cat.
I.
Overdow.
Alright, so much, great. Okay, Mark, who else?
Uh, I think that's it, unless you have any questions or
No. Uh, Mr. Edwards, did you wanna say anything?
Just, uh, what you have in the ad, I just, maybe next meeting, we'd be interested in hearing a little bit more about the stacks.
Absolutely, you're welcome. Okay, so that takes us, that's for A. Uh, for B, we find out some improvement, more D and D, Monty?
What do we? Healing with the bank with the total loans, working through our sister Wagner, to do the loan closing if we wanted to draw on it this year for some of these pre-development costs, those types of things. This is set up so that we'll close on Thursday the twenty first, so if we did wanna draw, we could.
This is set up so that we'll close on Thursday the 21st, so if we did want to draw, we could. I guess basically it's pretty straightforward. It's the 2% loan. From Bank North quota, they would set the improvement warrants. For the series 2017 and. Uh, we would be responsible for paying the interest on any drawdowns up until we actually finalize the project and do the assessment in 2019. Is what I had estimated.
Okay.
Anticipated.
I think that's the easiest way, cleanest way to do it too.
Uh, I did send these on to Pat, so if. Have any questions or concerns about them. It's pretty standard from everything that I've dealt with with. Bank North to go to the past.
Pat, did you have any comment on that or? Concede any reason why we shouldn't go that route?
I know, and you're basically following special assessment process, but you're not. But you're doing a loan. So stub through the warrants instead of bonds. That's really the only big difference is that. Lack of bonds. This is the problem, sorry, no.
All right. Okay, then if we're gonna direct Monty that to do that, would you do the emotion?
So.
Okay, a motion by Keller.
Second.
And second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Keller.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi. Motion carried, thank you. And then 4C.
Actually, there won't be any action on that since we don't have any plans or specs, then we're not worrying about bidding at this point, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Takes us down to. 8A. I guess I was, under my report, so I was gonna talk about the, the discussion meeting we had with Elwood's Park Place. Nancy, is there anything else you think about that discussion that we mentioned or?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay. Last week I attended a mayor's summit at the Capitol. And actually, special assessment projects. And how to fund them was a, a large topic. There was probably about 40 other mayors there. Including Mike Semenier from Vis- Vismark City and. You may or may not have heard how they're trying to find a different way to. Instead of special assessing proj- projects, how to go about funding them through their community. And one was, one way that does not gain any traction is just a monthly charge. So basically it's a special assessment broke down by month. To each person, um, not very popular. Uh, the other one was, um, a 2% sales tax raise. And that's also not very popular, so they're back to the drawing board and. And the special assessment as they have it set up, the way we do ours too is. Is the main way that they're doing it. Not many communities are doing a 10% buy down with their sales tax like we are. That was another thing we did mention to that group when we met with them that. Know that we're gonna put, if this is a $10 million project, we're gonna pay a million dollars out of it with sales tax money. Not many communities are fortunate, especially rural communities, to have enough sales tax to even make a difference. So I felt very fortunate. As, and. As you know, you've probably heard of Har- City of Harvey is, they're doing a $20 million street project right now. And, um. Unfortunately for them, they're losing 65 families right now because of Canadian Pacific Railroad pulling out their. Their rail hub in Harvey, and it's devastating that community, but. Uh, it was a fantastic meeting we had, uh, the governor, the tenant governor showed up to talk to us. Items, uh, large discussion on medical marijuana and, and recreational marijuana. And a lot of cities are already starting, they're in the process of getting their, um, ordinances, um. Worked on to, just in case one of those facilities comes close to your community or any of your community. Apparently McKenzie County has a fantastic. Ordinance right now written up. And policy for their, Buster, when you were at the, that meeting at Keller, did you see the, the McKenzie County plan?
I think we got samples of it.
Okay, all right, good. That's something we should probably be looking at. Apparently their birth quota will only. The plan is to allow six dispensaries across the state. And, uh. The State Department feels like they're gonna be closer to, um, urban areas. And high income populations or high dis- disposable income populations. And, uh, one person from the Commerce Department did say Hazen Beulah area. Would be a, a disp- has disposable income area. So maybe we're in that. Maybe there's a farmer that wants to be here or not, I don't know, but. I think we need to be, have our ducks in a row. I know they talked about. You know, setting the, setting the, you know, with, with Mercer County. If it's a mile outside of town here, you know, we want a, a 12-foot fence around it. We want barbed wire at the top. Do we want lights? Do we want? No, that's, and they're getting that specific on some of these topics of, of safety. I don't know, it's just, uh, and, and they really feel that in the next session, that there will be a huge push for recreational. And it's probably gonna pass.
Jerry.
Yeah.
Just one thing I, or the county is, they're pretty.
They've got a moratorium on it.
Yeah, and, and after attending that meeting, the recommendation was is that. You better start moving away from the moratorium and get your stuff in ducks in a row. And basically, what they were saying is, you're better off getting your ducks in a row. That way then you can. You can probably weed people out. If you don't have. Uh, if you don't have some things in place, people will find the loopholes and probably get in. So I think that's the stance that, uh, Mercer County is taking is they're, they're trying to get their, they're, they're looking at. You know, getting this thing going. And of course, they're looking at those samples as well that were just your beer that. But yeah, well, that's.
It was very interesting. Uh, okay, 8B, water sewer.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Street cemetery.
Uh, just a couple of things, um. Of course, we got the sweeper ordered.
That'll be your call.
Okay. I'm just gonna ask you that.
Take all this money and just deliver it home.
And then, uh. David talked to Monty and ran a idea he ran by me too. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let him explain it to you, so I don't. Misinterpret any information. About the.
I come, uh, on the dumpster.
On the dumpster, the.
I contacted NOK, we're gonna get a scrap metal dumpster. Sitting behind the city shop, we're gonna do some cleaning. After the first of the year, so. Up, it'll drop it off, throw all our scrap metal in it. When it's fully come pick it up, lay it. Have the city check for the tonnage or whatever, there's no charge. They have the dumpster sitting here. And I talked to Monty that. Now and again, there have been people who called the city shop, they got an old lawnmower or something they want to get rid of and they don't know where to dispose of it. So we could set up something where like Tuesdays and Thursdays, you can bring your junk metal to the city shop, we'll put it in the dumpster. So, you know, not the wrong kind of stuff gets in there.
So Tuesday and Thursday, because we don't have garbage and we have extra people.
We would always have somebody probably.
To monitor it and we don't just have people throwing trash bags in there.
In the backyard, you know, at night we lock the gates, people can't get in, but. That way we get the dumpster, you know, full faster.
Hmm, I think that's great.
That was a, all of its concern is like, well, we don't like to have a dumpster set for eight months and a full half, but. You know, they make a little bit of turn on, but.
Okay.
It's not gonna cost us anything and I got the address and everything to Monty where they mail the check and contact numbers and, um. Should have a dumpster here probably within maybe two, three half weeks sometime after the first of the year.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
And that's all that I have.
Okay. Finance, busing?
We did have a quarterly busing meeting on Friday. And one of the items that we talked about was, um. Putting some logo on our buses. Our new bus is in Vismark, um, right now and, um. Monty and Peg looked at a couple of them and they chose to, to try and do this one on the top. Yeah, with the, with the logo on top and then the busing and the phone number on it. We do have a bid from Sign Pro. The total is $24.95.88.
Oh, there's the bus, pardon me.
Yep. That's how it would look on there. And the van.
That desk, excuse me, dressed up a little bit more than.
Are you making a motion, Nancy?
I am.
Okay, we have a motion to have. The decals put on Sign Pro $24.95.88.
That's for the new bus, Nancy, and all current equipment.
Oh, yep, three buses and a van.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion.
I saw then the white, the white, uh, rectangle on that picture, is that just a?
It's a gray. Oh, the white, yeah, that's just.
That was just a, just computer.
Yeah, white out.
Yeah, yeah, all right, all right.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Roll call, Wolf.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right.
That would be everything, so.
Thank you. Police, fire, forestry.
Okay, the, uh, police report, we're in the process of completing the interviews and. Uh, would be prepared at our next meeting to make a recommendation for the. Hiring of a new police officer in the city, so we'll table that discussion to, to the next meeting, but we have completed our interview process on that. As it relates to our fire department visiting with Stan today. They are looking to acquire a new spreader for the rescue truck. And so they've received a quote for that. We have money budgeted between the rescue budget, new equipment budget, and departmental funds. And so I'd like to make a motion that we give them approval to spend not to exceed $9,000. The, the quota is just under $9,000 for this spreader.
Okay, we have a motion by Keller.
I'll second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. Is the spreader, like, does it have a light?
Uh huh, yep.
Okay.
And there's, there happens to be a sample. Sitting in the box over there by the mailboxes there, so they're, they're getting a loaner right now to take a look at it. For sure, but.
Do we ask the county to help with that then too, Monty or?
The rescue squad, the county already provides funds every year.
Yeah.
And that, they'll be using the majority of those funds for.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Keller.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. Anything else, Dan?
That's it for tonight.
Um, just a bit of information for forestry. Uh, Joel Nichols from the state forester office will be here tomorrow, spend some time with John Dahl, looking at some. Some areas of town, pruning and things like that, so. Just FYI. Be here 1:30 tomorrow. Uh, Buster, HCD.
Hey, I really don't have a lot more to add. To be fair with you folks.
Okay.
Uh, I do know that in talking with Ritterath, uh. We're going to try to get another letter out. Uh, I'm not sure what's holding up the staging of the apartments, but they still haven't been staged.
Oh, okay.
And the plan is, once they're staged, we're gonna, you know, hold another open house, but. So.
Okay, sounds good. That it?
Yep.
Thank you, Buster. All right, and of course, fondness nine A, Dakota pump and control maintenance agreement?
Annual maintenance agreement with them for our lift stations, same cost as the previous years, $560 for the first stage and. $200 for each additional one. Generally, they go through at least that main lift station number one down here on the southeast side. They go through that with a fine tooth comb over here.
Okay. We need a motion to accept that contract.
So.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by. Um, your name, uh, your name is? Hack, sorry. CTE, I think. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
The activities that they do here are, are folks, is it a lack of time or a lack of expertise or, I mean, I understand they go through it with a fine tooth comb, but.
Yeah, a lot of it is like the maintenance, like on the pump itself. You know, like if there's. Yeah, like an oil, an oil cavity can suck, you know. Like you know, I love it, I would add the oil, like.
Okay.
It is pretty. Pretty intense for people that are. Trained, I think, you know.
Okay.
And to me, I think we've been doing this for, for a few years. I know the price of the year goes up more and more, you know, but. Maybe like last year was like 400 and something like that.
The last, the last three years have been 560.
560.
I'm just curious if there's, do, do our people then shadow them when they perform these particular functions to, to learn? What to listen for and what to watch for? I mean, I know at the plant, that's what you, you get tuned into, to hearing things and seeing things and smelling things. You have a more that we can glean off of that. Okay, okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Stern. Over and over.
All right. Motion carried. Nine B, 2018 election agreement from Mercer County.
See, I had a chance to read that.
Mm-hmm.
Just present, if I could just make a few comments.
Please do.
I'm thinking that the county. They have, uh. Lost its memory on some things, but anyway, according to state law. Cities set their own boundaries for precincts, the voting precincts, so you determine. How many precincts you have. And for what purpose. Secondly, when it comes to polling, which is the voting, cities set the polling places, not the county. So first you establish a precinct, then you decide if you want a polling place there. The joint powers agreement. In section E, 3E. Gives the county the authority to establish the polling places. And that's why what you've read in the papers, uh, we're going away with all this, we're just going to alternate between Beulah and Hazen. Well, the county can say that, but they don't have the authority to do that unless you give it to them. So if you want a polling place, you may have a, you create a polling place. The original intent in entering into those joint powers agreements with the county was to save money. Because, yeah, yeah, that was expensive around the elections. Monty was probably, a part of that has a much better memory than I do, so he could probably tell you more about the history of that, but. The whole idea was, uh, you know, then. The county would take care of that. You still have to pay your portion, you still have to pay for publications, you still have to pay for. So much for Beulah, I believe is always set up at one.
The difference is the fact that the county gets auto rebalance where we as a city are set up with the vendors to have the auto rebalance.
Okay. So, so for this particular agreement, um. If I. if I were you folks, I would reserve your rights to create your own precincts and your own polling places. And if you you could still enter into the agreement with the county, but reserving those rights and not allowing them to dictate to you your, here's what the law says. Says in regards to polling places, which is the big idea. The board of county commissioners of each county shall designate one or more polling places for each precinct. However, the polling places or precincts located within the boundaries of any incorporated city must be designated and altered if required by the governing body of the city. Polling places may not be designated later than the sixty-fourth date of one election. So in other words, you folks are required by law to establish polling places. And it's only through this agreement that you're giving up that lawful responsibility to the county. So I know Monty has asked, well, should we request of the county polling? You don't have to request anything, you tell them, we're gonna have a polling place in Hazen. That's up to you. But as a result, you may end up, you know, paying the bill for that. That's, that's the only kind of deal.
Right.
Yeah, so it is the question of shall we, or shall we not have a polling place, shall we not pay for a polling place? Is what you're really deciding.
So we have to decide cost effectiveness, isn't it?
But, but even with that, I would still suggest that you reserve those rights to yourself. Even if you end up paying for it to the county. Well, that's fine. Fair.
So the action tonight, they're looking for approval from the city to go into that.
Joint Powers Agreement?
Joint Powers Agreement that says that in the future for until somebody makes it different or comes back to the table with a different plan, it would be alternating between
Well, their agreement says the county, honored before December thirty-first of the year preceding the election, is responsible for establishing and manage managing the county, city, and school polling locations for the joint elections, including setting down our polls at the local. So you're telling them that they can set the locations where state law says, well, you're an incorporated city, you must set the polling places, so.
The difference there is the fact that if we enter into an agreement with the county, then we must not.
Yeah, exactly, you have the right. Exactly. You're shifting it to that.
Any idea, Monty, what it costs us to do our own versus having the county? Do it?
Now you're looking at five polling, or five polling officials here from the nine AM to seven PM. At twelve dollars an hour each. That's gotta be minimum wage, I mean. You could go less than the twelve dollars, but you're gonna have fun trying to get into the work. So you've got them for those hours, plus then we'd have to do our own ballots, they'd have to stay here and count them. We'd then have to have our own canvassing board to come in and canvas those results. Compare the polling books with those ballots or the tabulated results. So you've got another couple hours of a five-person board. A couple thousand dollars.
So what if we did?
Under two thousand.
We had a polling place. We've always had a polling place.
What they're, what they're proposing is, is minimizing the number of polling places, obviously, and they, they claim.
But that's what they're doing this year. Next year, they can make it all different and say, you have to come to Stanton, everybody. They, what this joint agreement does is gives them the right to do whatever they want. And put it wherever they want it. It doesn't have to be in Hazen or Beulah. It can, they can put it anywhere.
Which has been done for the last probably ten election cycles.
What has been?
The agreements and them setting the polling locations.
Okay.
Because.
Well, although Hazen did tell the county at one point, we want a polling place.
Yeah.
Is this an annual agreement?
No.
No, because only for the election cycles, every other year.
Two years, yeah, two years.
Okay, so it's, so it's for each election cycle. So the next election cycle, we would be in a position to to have the same discussion again.
And they're not saying where they're gonna put it, no?
You.
They, they, they went on record to say the first year would be at Beulah and the second time would be at Hazen.
It would be what?
If Beulah could be the first year. Yeah, this year, Hazen.
This year would be at Beulah.
So can we go back to them and say, we will enter into this, but.
Reserve our right.
Reserve our.
You have a lawful authority to pick your own polling places.
And they can say, well, no.
You could say, yeah, we don't want a polling place in Hazen, send me a home, whatever.
But then they can turn around and say.
But they're gonna say, well, fine, you pay for it.
Assess the cost to you. And I don't, and I guess honestly, without talking to them, would they be willing to select the boards from their pool of people or?
Are we gonna hear a loud outcry from our community members, especially elderly that or don't want to go to Beulah to do this?
Possibly, yeah.
Versus here in Hazen.
Do we, do we provide pre-busing service?
We will, if that's, if that happens, I think we should.
I mean, that
Yeah.
That may assist it, I know, in, in helping being part of a cost-saving measure, as well as still giving our less-than-mobile individuals opportunity to still make it to a polling place.
Buster.
One of the things that was discussed at that meeting, I happened to be at that meeting when they were discussing it, was the fact that voting by mail has become so much more popular. You know, absentee, it used to be the absentee, how it's voting by mail. How granted, there are, you know, I don't know, there's still are people who like to go to the polls, but that hasn't been my heart breaking the last five times or whatever, I always vote by mail. I could I didn't turn my crank to go to the polls. You know, but, I mean, each person's different.
So they still have an opportunity to do it, obviously, right, by, without going to Beulah, yeah.
And I don't know, you know, maybe I'm speaking on a turn here, but I'm not sure what that does to the local person, Monty, in terms of I think at one time wasn't the idea that you would kind of combine some of that and you'd save some of the effort that went into versus when you have to do it by yourself? Because I remember when Ethel used to have to set up for the school board. That used to be a big task. You know, and by combining with the county, I think it kind of lessened some of that, maybe, I don't know, I'm sure.
Yeah.
But whatever.
I think Buster brings up a good point, I think more and more people are aligning themselves with a mailing type ballot. You don't have to worry about taking off work or getting someplace.
So then I guess in the past, the county then paid for the polling areas of?
Yeah, they paid all the workers and everything, basically, the city was only responsible for the ballots that were specific to your our, our three precincts.
Maybe, maybe the best plan of attack here is to approve with the stipulation that if Hazen were to choose to want to create its own polling place, that we retain the right to do so by law. And then, and then we can further discuss it at a later time, and, you know, we can seek feedback from our citizens and stuff like that. And we're not, and we're not blocked.
I don't think you have a lot of time though, do you? It's gonna be sixty-five days before, is that correct?
Correct. Basically till March.
Till March.
Does anybody know why?
Yeah.
They're wanting to hear this, saving money.
Saving money. Saving money.
They're gonna publish over twenty thousand dollar savings, that's, that's pretty substantial.
I mean, 'cause I understand the whole mailing and stuff, but you, you guys, me as my age, I go to the polls. I don't really get it, crank turn often, but.
Just go to the grocery store and visit.
I know, but I'm just saying, there's still a lot of people that go to the polls. There really is.
And there's still an opportunity to go to the polls. It's, it just may not be as convenient as maybe it once was.
Well, I mean, I kind of agree with things on this. You kind of have to pre, pre, like, register, let's say, for you to mail a ballot.
Sure.
And there's been times where that, you know, it's a good, the mail's laid out to the side, you know, so, oh, I was supposed to mail again, but, I guess now, now, I mean, I do have to go to the polls, you know.
You gotta pay your phone bill and your energy bill and all those other things too, it's, it's called being an adult, I guess, I don't know.
I don't even pay that anymore, piss on the planet.
This is easy.
I mean, I, I applaud them for, you know, looking at creative ways to save.
Do we know about how many people showed up at the last ballot election in Hazen?
Who showed up at the polling place?
Oh, I thought, yeah, polling, I'm sorry.
No, I don't, no, I'm sorry.
I mean, was there fifty people, was there two hundred people?
I'd say there was a lot, 'cause I was here.
I'm seeing too. There was fifty in the twenty minutes I was here.
Sure.
I would say there were a few hundred, probably.
Okay. I mean, does it? 'Cause those people aren't gonna vote by mail if they came last time and did it, so you know, is the cost worth it, two hundred people that you're gonna have here?
Unless, unless you, you make an effort through the newspaper or whatever to kind of promote the idea of using the, the mail. And then, and then also the discussion of writing rights.
Yeah.
Although I, I would say that when I was here, the the demographic there, the age group was, was not necessarily all the elderly.
Oh, no, we, no.
It was a good mix.
It was a good mix, but you, you know, I guess I'm speaking on behalf of the elderly folks.
Well, and I know that the county many years ago went to we used to have thirteen polling places in the county. And then it went to three, and now it went to two, and now they're looking at just alternating. Because you have all the people that are either working north of Beulah or all over at Stanton who could go there anyway before or after work and cast their ballots, so. And that was one of the things too, you didn't have. You'd have a polling board, five people sitting in Golden Valley all day for twenty-two PM to come in, you know.
Right. Understand.
So on the twenty, twenty-eighteen city ballot, we'll have two commissioners, is that right?
President, two commissioners, two park board.
Okay, so there's, there's a fair amount of stuff, so. I don't know if the schools have anything or not.
Yeah.
Other school board members.
They would have some school board position, for sure.
Well, I mean, the only way really we can go is throughout the damage and see what the outcome is.
Well, what, what, what that affords us then is to figure out what the real costs are gonna be and stuff like that, and then we can make a conscious decision whether we want to have a polling place local and then be willing to foot the bill for it or just relinquish it to the, to the county's plan of just having the Beulah site. So we would have to stipulate that in our, in our motion that we retain the the right correctly.
The agreement they have signed is in, is effective January first. Has they, has what they've said to you is effective January first?
If we agree.
If you agree, yeah.
But the point being is we can counter and, and go into an agreement with them as well, where we retain.
This is a contract, you can negotiate it whatever terms you want.
That's what I would propose.
To go into it with the stipulation that we reserve our right as the city to have a polling place, period.
And we have until March, you said, to make that decision and file and do whatever else is necessary.
Then it's biased to the law.
Now what would be in the next step? They would, we would have to collectively draw up a contract or whatever that's signed by?
We'd have to negotiate with the county and see if they're willing to agree to your neutral.
Your motion, Adam?
Yeah.
Full second.
Okay, we have a motion by Pillar. And a second by Hack. Discussion. Reed, would you read the motion? Monty, please. Sorry.
The motion is to enter into the joint powers agreement for the two thousand and eighteen election with the county reserving the right of the city to establish a polling place within the city corporate limits.
Can you see?
Well, I just, you know, I guess, you know, I guess the country was, was only founded on, you know, you know, all these, all these, all these, like, principles, you know. You know, it's one of them, speaking of the vote, you know, now we're, we're kind of just admitting that, and, uh, you know, I mean, a amount of money, I just don't see it, so. It's making a big difference, so. You know, 'cause, 'cause really, I mean, it's not gonna be every year, right? It'll be every other year, so it's not.
So the county can come back and say, yes, fine. Just was gonna save the county citizens twenty thousand dollars. Now Hazen will pay half of that if we want two polling places.
Well, if we, if we disagree, if we, if we shoot this down, this, this agreement, they, what are, is the county then obligated then to provide a polling place in the city of Hazen?
Yeah, we would just have to pay our costs, not, not even like half of the whole county cost, you know.
It would be the.
At least for city elections you're talking about. And that's all you have control. The school board has their own elections.
So if we have our own polling place here, the only things that are on a ballot here in the city of Hazen are city of Hazen-ish things.
Yes.
Yeah. So if there's county, county election stuff.
With the with what they're proposing, if they continue to create and pay for ballots, et cetera, your only options would be for the polling place itself, for the operational polling place.
Yeah.
So it would be the people that Monty, you know, can, so. That would be it. I mean, it's all, it's all negotiation, so.
But the county could back, come back and say, no, we don't.
Yeah, and if they say no, then all we would have is the city ballot, people would still have to go to Beulah to vote the county.
The county, so they, then they go to two places. Or mailing in one.
And so with the motion that, that, that I put on the table then, if we did a local polling place here, it would be limited then, then just to city business, the, the county election, no, it would be the whole inch of all.
It's open to everything.
Okay.
Polling places.
Okay.
But you would have to get the ballots from the county.
And machines and everything else to read them.
Right. The bubble machines or?
I just don't understand how they can tie hands like that, or try to, but it'll be, one, it's a state law.
And if the state law says that you enter into an agreement with them, they have the right to do that.
Right.
So.
I understand there's cost saving.
But it, but it sounds like, it sounds like, if, if I heard you right. But it, but it sounds like, it sounds like, if, if I heard you right, if we choose not to get into this agreement with them at all, we, we still have our hands tied in terms of there being a polling place here in the city of Hazen. Unless we venture up and do it all on our own.
No, you said polling place, and they have to provide ballots for everything.
But we, we'd have to pay for.
You just have to pay for it.
We have to pay for it. Right, now the county pays for it. And we probably have to line up.
They can't take away your ballots at all.
No.
So, so just shooting it down or doing it with, the, the, the way that I put the motion in place, the result's the same.
All your motion would just reserve the right to have a polling place.
Okay.
All the other, basically all the other things in the agreement are still there. Is my understanding of that.
That's what I understood your motion. All you're doing is preserving polling place selection. The rest of the agreement here must be approved.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
So if the city of Stanton agrees to this, they'll never have their own polling place again.
They won't have a polling place.
To Tony.
He'll go to the county's office any day.
Tony courthouse.
Wants the ballots or something.
If you tried to get in the Corey courthouse, county courthouse. It's airport security.
I guess I, myself personally, I feel, and we're still, we have a motion and a second, and we're still discussing, but I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know if it's going to really make that many people in our community upset that they don't have a spot that if we release this right, or if we're just be, being not stubborn, but saying, is it gonna, are we gonna incur more costs by having our own spot here?
Maybe we'll some first.
I would say, yeah, we're gonna incur more costs.
I think they're gonna be upset just because of the fact that they have to travel to Beulah.
Or mail it in.
Or mail it in, but if we provide, if we can provide bussing, we'd have to talk to the bussing to see if they have time in their day to do a bussing. 'Cause you have to have like more than maybe one bus going to give people that.
Absolutely, and there's no schoolwork at that time, so that.
Yeah, bussing. Then I don't think they'll be as, they'll still grumble, people will grumble, but I think they'll use the bussing if we provide it.
Well, with the, the cost of the bussing, that's, I can, you know, it's, you know, time.
The, the cost of bussing is gonna be less than what the cost of having a local.
Yeah.
'Cause you're gonna have a lot of person.
And a lot of it's really funded, so.
Yeah, well, I guess one example, too, is, I mean, in like one year, I mean, I was over in Stanton, you know? I thought I was here, you know, trying to work late, thought, well, I've got time, you know? I might show up at the front door to City Hall and send a note, you know, call us Stanton, call us, and, you know? And just enough to do that, you know, if you've got enough time.
And you're gonna incur some of that, too. They're gonna come here, go, I didn't know it wasn't here.
It's gonna be an education thing on the county's part.
Well, exactly. If they're not gonna inform you that.
And are.
But you only do so much in polling.
The newspaper always does a pretty good job. They put a sample ballot out there, they put the, the voting districts, they, they put the location of voting required.
Twenty-eight percent of people.
Yeah. Even if you send a letter in the mail, twenty-five percent of the people are not gonna read the letter in the mail. Um, go door to door, they're still gonna forget, I mean, it. Yeah, Facebook, put it on Facebook, they'll, they'll be, it's.
Any more discussion? Roll call. Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
No.
Stern.
No.
Over and over.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Motion carried. Not that I don't, kind of, it's what they know also, but. Uh, ten A, policy revision, second reading.
If you cover the last meeting, we would do two readings of this information. Once provided to every employee as to the proposed change to the policy, there I haven't received any comments. So I guess if you want. Is, is make a motion to go ahead and, and make this, this policy, that. So moved.
Okay, motion by Pillar.
Second.
To adopt, and second by Wolf. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion carried. Eleven A, two thousand eighteen liquor license applications.
Okay, all of the usual establishments have requested a license again for the two thousand eighteen calendar year. I did not provide copies of all of them, made worse, all returned, notarized, signed. The only change has to do with, I'm just here, sorry. Jimmy's Lounge is the single applicant now, Carrie Mole. But she was always a co-applicant in the previous years.
Okay. Um, we need a motion to approve the license applications.
So moved.
Motion by Hack. Second. Second, Mr. Stern. Discussion. Casey?
What's, uh, uh, what's the name of all, all of this?
Oh, um, we have Hazen Bottle Shop, Crowsey's, Long Shots, Boxes Bar, Susan Redrath, S and S, DeAndreas, Schwab, Donna Schwab, Long Shots, that's me, Boxes, Jimmy's, and the Beisen Bar and Grill.
It's like five hundred dollars for beer.
Actually, for, they're doing on and off sale, beer and like, it's a thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
That's the maximum.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We need a roll call motion script.
Yes.
Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried. Eleven B, January meeting. So the next meeting would be January first. I will not be here, but I will be home that night. Are we opposed to change you to Tuesday the second, or do you wanna just keep it on the first?
I say the second.
Second? You ready?
I probably will be home till after.
Okay, you have any heartburn, change you to the second.
Yeah, I won't be here on the first either, so.
Hack, your round, second.
Sure.
Third.
Second for sure.
All right, okay. We'll move the next, the, the January meeting to January second, five-thirty. We don't do, we don't need a motion back here. All right, approval, approval of bills?
Added a few moves to your pile here.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.